Thank you very much and good morning to all of you. Today is Friday, July the 30th, 2010, and welcome to City Hall, the Los Angeles City Council Chambers. And this is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Today is July the 30th, 2010. Our City Council meets three times per week on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And all meetings are open to the public. For those of you who cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised via cable on Channel 35, or can be viewed by visiting our website. We cannot yet call the meeting to order because we do not yet have a quorum. We have eight members present. We need 10 for a quorum. I would like to thank Mr. Alarcon, Ms. Han, Mr. Huisar. Mr. Krikorian is here. Mr. Parks, and Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Garcetti, waiting the arrival of two more members. And while we are waiting for the arrival of two members, I would like to ask Mr. Wesson to step forward.
No, two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Krikorian, are you ready to go? Okay. While Mr. Krikorian is coming up to the podium, I'd like to ask the young people of the Sierra Service Project to please rise and be recognized. If you're in the chamber, rise. Let's give them a hand. They have worked very closely with Rick Eaton, who is the Executive Director of the Sierra Service Project and staff for the past four years. And they've been working in the Ninth Council District from June to August of every year, with their teams staying in residence at the Vermont Square United Methodist Church, which is located in Vermont Square in the Ninth Council District. They have assisted a number of constituents in and around the Ninth District, community organizations, neighborhood councils, and senior centers. And I wanted to recognize them today for their service project and all of their exemplary work. And their accomplishments have been of great value to the Ninth District and the City of Los Angeles. And again, thank you very much for your service. And again, let's give them a hand. Thank you. Mr. Wesson, if you would step in at this time and do your adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we going to get on the screen?
You're on.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Madam President and members. Today is one of my favorite days. My favorite Friday is Pet Adoption Friday. I've got the cutest little thing, maybe one of the cutest dogs that we've had. He's a Yorgie mix. His name is Marty. Marty is three years old. He's looking for his home. He has all of his shots. Is he ready to go home today? He's ready to go. Marty, stay in there. You want to be seen, Marty. You want to be seen. Now, look at that.
He's about five pounds.
And he's about five pounds, okay? So if you're looking for unconditional love and a beautiful companion animal, I think that Marty is more than a worthy candidate. If you are interested, I keep, there you are. If you're interested in Marty, and I have to say that we have a 100 percent adoption rate where it relates to dogs and puppies here in the City of Los Angeles, if you're interested in this, and this is a beautiful dog, please call 888-452-7381. Probably 70 to 80 percent of our dogs are adopted by our city family, people who work for the City of Los Angeles, people that are here in the council chambers. So what we generally do is we keep the dogs in the back for a while to give you an opportunity to come and look at Marty and take him home. I've got a feeling that Marty won't last long. Again, we do the best we can at our shelters to get our dogs adopted, but whoever adopts Marty today, you could be responsible for saving his life, because we cannot keep the dogs forever. Again, 888-452-7381. And if you call and Marty's already adopted, don't feel bad. We've got several shelters throughout the City of Los Angeles and hundreds of companion animals, dogs and cats and rabbits, you name it, we've got it. But anyway, this is Marty. You want unconditional love? He will give it to you. He is waiting for his new mother or father right now. So, Madam President, thank you very much. And if anybody wants to come in the back and look at Marty, you are welcome to do that. He will not get any bigger. This is it. Five pounds. I mean, you could be like, this is like a Paris Hilton dog. Anyway, thank you, Madam President and members.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. All right, we are at 10 members, and before we go to the next, I'm sorry. Council President Garcetti, would you like to make an introduction and then we'll go through the agenda?
Thank you, council members. If I could just briefly have your attention and thank you to the members of the public as well. We have some visiting peers that are here with us today, friends of mine who are members of Democratic Municipal Officials Board that I chair for the Democratic Party, council members from around the country that are here. I'd like to introduce Otto Lee, who is from Sunnyvale, California. He also serves in the Naval Reserve and as a council member recently deployed to Iraq for a year, came back and continued his service to his city as well as continuing service to country. But Otto Lee, who is here with us. Charles Pugh, who is the City Council President of Detroit, is with us as well, a man recently elected, a young man, under 40, for a little bit longer, and who has made history in Detroit, but had a long and illustrious career in broadcasting and has done a great job. And he is here with us as well. Myron Lowry, who was recently the acting mayor in Memphis and a council member of the Memphis City Council. Joe Moore is also joining us from Chicago on our board as well. Stephanie Rollings Blake, the mayor of Baltimore. Mary Alice Cisneros from San Antonio. But they're here to enjoy Los Angeles. I'm giving them a little bit of a tour and just wanted to introduce them to all of you and to the public and welcome them to the City of Angels, if we can give them a round of applause.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. And before we move on to the next presentation, we'll go through the agenda very quickly.
Alarcon, Cardenas Han, Huisar Caress, Krikorian Labange, Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosenzall Smith, Wesson Zion, Garcetti, 10 members present in a quorum. Madam President.
All right. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Caress moves. Mr. Huisar seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Mr. Alarcon moves. Mr. Parks seconds.
Madam President, would you like to run through the agenda?
Yes.
Items one through four are items for which public hearings have been held. The Housing Community Economic Development Committee report for item number two has been submitted and distributed to council. A public hearing, oh, excuse me, a public hearing for this matter was satisfied.
All right. Members, are there any specials? If not, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next order of business?
Madam President, items five through 11 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right. Members, again, any specials? No specials? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Number nine, I just have a verbal amendment that we're working on right now. Make when we call special.
Okay, you're not ready? Okay, all right. All right, call nine special.
Madam President, we do have cards on item number eight.
All right, eight will be called special. Any other specials, members? All right. Open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next item?
Madam President, that would bring us back to presentations.
All right, great. That's the entire agenda? All right. I know we have a special agenda too, but we have to finish this first. All right, great. Mr. Krikorian, you're up next.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm very pleased to be able to recognize today Matt Weiner, the creator of Mad Men, a television series that, as everyone knows, has set the television industry on fire in its three seasons and now beginning the fourth season. This is a show that has achieved tremendous creative success, two consecutive Emmys for Best Drama, three Golden Globe Awards, and really has kind of set a new standard, I think, in television, particularly cable television, for top-quality production. And it's a show that really captures a slice of life in New York and an era that we now have a window to through this show that has captured in such a magnificent way that it's developed a fan base that is really rabidly passionate about this show and with good reason. And all of those reasons are good reasons to recognize Matt Weiner for his creative success. But I really wanted to make a special point of recognizing him because we all know that our heritage industry here in Los Angeles is under constant attack from other cities and other states who are trying to draw the jobs away from Los Angeles and away from California. And this show is an example of that. We lost Ugly Betty, of course, to New York in 2008, and that was a wake-up call. And this show, this terrific show that everyone in the country is talking about now, was in serious danger of being produced in New York. And it would make sense. This is a show that is set in New York, New York is really a character in the show. But Matt Weiner stood up and said, no. He's a Los Angeles, not a native, but nearly a native of Los Angeles. He knows that Los Angeles is home to the best crews, the best actors, the best facilities anywhere on planet Earth to produce a television show. And so despite tremendous pressure, despite economic persuasion efforts that were sent his way, he stood firm and said, no, we're going to shoot Mad Men in Los Angeles. And so because of that decision, almost 5,000 jobs have been created in Los Angeles that would have gone elsewhere but for Matt Weiner standing up and saying, we're going to be in Los Angeles. And so it's a great pleasure for me to recognize Matt Weiner, both for his creative success, but much more importantly, for his courage in standing up under pressure to protect California jobs, to protect Los Angeles jobs, and to make such an infusion into our local economy that this show is represented. So I'm pleased to recognize Matt for that decision. And on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, I'd like to present this resolution to you, Matt Weiner. Congratulations and thank you for your loyalty to the people of Los Angeles.
Thank you. And I would like to say that I appreciate the apparent altruistic and job-related appearance of this. I do love this city, but the people who have those jobs really have, my wife Linda to thank, and my family to thank, Martin, Charlie, Arlo, and Ellis, because they insisted that we live here. And my wife is a native, and this is our home. And I had been away, and I just felt that, we felt that this is the place where we wanted to raise our family, and there was no reason that we shouldn't be able to work here and live here and enjoy the creative life that I've been able to enjoy. So that's whose name maybe should be on here. Anyway, thank you very much. It's a great honor, and I'm proud to be a part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Krikorian. Our next presentation will come from Ms. Han.
All my staff is leaving. Okay. Thank you, colleagues. Boy, this is the second Friday in a row that I've said goodbye to one of my staff members. And it's certainly with a heavy heart that today I recognize Rosa Corrales for her incredible service to the City of Los Angeles. She's retiring after 16 years of service, and her smile, her positive attitude, her work ethic will be greatly missed. Here's a little bit about Rosa. She moved from Mexico to Los Angeles in 1960. She attended Garfield High School and graduated from Cal State University LA with a BA in Child Development. She's married and had three beautiful children, and they all share in her passion for the community. Rosa began her career working for the Los Angeles Unified School District and worked for more than 11 years as a teacher assistant, parent educator, and community representative. She worked on many school advisory councils, worked with a group of LAUSD educators to implement the bilingual master plan. She then joined the City of Los Angeles family as a Public Works Field Deputy for Councilwoman Rita Walters. As her passion for the residents of Los Angeles grew, she continued her career as a community advocate for my office. Constituents, coworkers, and all who come in contact with her can sense her dedication to and love for public service. Rosa has always such a good attitude about her work. And really, the community of Watts is cleaner and better taken care of because of Rosa. There's this one corner at 103rd and Central that continues to be a chronic illegal dumping site, and there's an alley right next to it. And when I walk in the office, in the Watts office, I don't even have to say anything. Rosa says, I'm on it. I've already called Street Services. And you know, one of the things about Rosa is that I think we all know, it's really about relationships. It's about how we treat each other. It's the familiarity with city departments. And really, when our staff members have good relationships with city departments, things get done. And Rosa has a life of having good, positive relationships with our city departments, and they are happy to respond to her daily phone calls about trash, about dumping, about graffiti, about all the things that really create blight in our city. And truly, we will miss Rosa, truly. She works every day to improve the quality of life for Angelenos, from the time she gets there till the time she goes home. I don't know what we're going to do without her. We're going to really miss her, but her retirement is greatly deserved. And her family's here today, her son Hector, her daughters Yvonne and Sandy, their husbands Dave and Michael, her grandsons Devon and Michael. I know you're very proud of your mom. She truly embodies what a public servant is. They're throwing her a big retirement party tomorrow at the Watts Senior Center, and already more than 150 people have RSVP'd to come and wish Rosa well. My staff is here today because they all, too, have great respect for Rosa. She has been a good colleague. She has been a good employee. She's a good public servant, and we appreciate all she's done and will miss her greatly. So Rosa, congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for all you've done. Here's this full resolution signed by all the members of the City Council highlighting your career and resolving, along with the mayor, to thank you for what you've done for the City of Los Angeles and to wish you well in the next chapter of your life. Congratulations, Rosa.
Give her a big hand. And Ms. Han, before you ask Rosa Corrales to speak, I also wanted to add my congratulations. I had the privilege of working with Rosa Corrales for a number of years in the Ninth Council District with the previous council member. And your comment about her work ethic is absolutely correct, and her ability to build relationships with people and to be able to solve problems. And I know that your retirement is very well earned, and I hope that you enjoy every single minute of it.
Thank you. Buenos dias.
Buenos dias.
Good morning. It's been a privilege and an honor for me as a public servant to the City of Los Angeles. I dedicated my time to work to better the life of our residents, not only in front of my house, but all over, wherever I went, in any way that I could help. I was a deputy, field deputy before, and then with councilwoman Janice Han, community advocate, and I...
And all of those reasons are good reasons to recognize Matt Weiner for his creative success, but I really wanted to make a special point of recognizing him because we all know that our heritage industry here in Los Angeles is under constant attack from other cities and other states who are trying to draw the jobs away from Los Angeles and away from California. And this show is an example of that. We lost Ugly Betty, of course, to New York in 2008, and that was a wake-up call. And this show, this terrific show that everyone in the country is talking about now, was in serious danger of being produced in New York. And it would make sense. This is a show that is set in New York. New York is really a character in the show. But Matt Weiner stood up and said, "No." He's a Los Angeles, not a native, but nearly a native of Los Angeles. He knows that Los Angeles is home to the best crews, the best actors, the best facilities anywhere on planet Earth to produce a television show. And so despite tremendous pressure, despite economic persuasion efforts that were sent his way, he stood firm and said, "No, we're going to shoot Mad Men in Los Angeles." And so because of that decision, almost 5,000 jobs have been created in Los Angeles that would have gone elsewhere but for Matt Weiner standing up and saying, "We're going to be in Los Angeles." And so it's a great pleasure for me to recognize Matt Weiner, both for his creative success, but much more importantly, for his courage in standing up under pressure to protect California jobs, to protect Los Angeles jobs, and to make such an infusion into our local economy that this show is represented. So I'm pleased to recognize Matt for that decision. And on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, I'd like to present this resolution to you, Matt Weiner. Congratulations, and thank you for your loyalty to the people of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
And I would like to say that I appreciate the apparent altruistic and job-related appearance of this. I do love this city, but the people who have those jobs really have my wife Linda to thank and my family to thank, Martin, Charlie, Arlo, and Ellis, because they insisted that we live here. And my wife is a native, and this is our home. And I had been away, and I just felt that, we felt that this is the place where we wanted to raise our family, and there was no reason that we shouldn't be able to work here and live here and enjoy the creative life that I've been able to enjoy. So that's whose name maybe should be on here. Anyway, thank you very much. It's a great honor, and I'm proud to be a part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Kocorian. Our next presentation will come from Ms. Han.
And my staff is leaving. Okay.
Thank you, colleagues. Boy, this is the second Friday in a row that I've said goodbye to one of my staff members. And it's certainly with a heavy heart that today I recognize Rosa Corrales for her incredible service to the city of Los Angeles. She's retiring after 16 years of service, and her smile, her positive attitude, her work ethic will be greatly missed. Here's a little bit about Rosa. She moved from Mexico to Los Angeles in 1960. She attended Garfield High School and graduated from Cal State University LA with a BA in Child Development. She's married and had three beautiful children, and they all share in her passion for the community. Rosa began her career working for the Los Angeles Unified School District and worked for more than 11 years as a teacher assistant, parent educator, and community representative. She worked on many school advisory councils, worked with a group of LAUSD educators to implement the bilingual master plan. She then joined the City of Los Angeles family as a Public Works Field Deputy for Councilwoman Rita Walters. As her passion for the residents of Los Angeles grew, she continued her career as a community advocate for my office. Constituents, coworkers, and all who come in contact with her can sense her dedication to and love for public service. Rosa has always such a good attitude about her work. And really, the community of Watts is cleaner and better taken care of because of Rosa. There's this one corner at 103rd and Central that continues to be a chronic illegal dumping site, and there's an alley right next to it. And when I walk in the office, in the Watts office, I don't even have to say anything. Rosa says, "I'm on it. I've already called Street Services." And you know, one of the things about Rosa is that I think we all know, it's really about relationships. It's about how we treat each other. It's the familiarity with city departments. And really, when our staff members have good relationships with city departments, things get done. And Rosa has a life of having good, positive relationships with our city departments, and they are happy to respond to her daily phone calls about trash, about dumping, about graffiti, about all the things that really create blight in our city. And truly, we will miss Rosa, truly. She works every day to improve the quality of life for Angelenos from the time she gets there till the time she goes home. I don't know what we're going to do without her. We're going to really miss her, but her retirement is greatly deserved. And her family's here today, her son Hector, her daughters Yvonne and Sandy, their husbands, Dave and Michael, her grandsons Devon and Michael. I know you're very proud of your mom. She truly embodies what a public servant is. They're throwing her a big retirement party tomorrow at the Watts Senior Center, and already more than 150 people have RSVP'd to come and wish Rosa well. My staff is here today because they all, too, have great respect for Rosa. She has been a good colleague. She has been a good employee. She's a good public servant, and we appreciate all she's done and will miss her greatly. So Rosa, congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for all you've done. Here's this full resolution signed by all the members of the City Council highlighting your career and resolving, along with the mayor, to thank you for what you've done for the city of Los Angeles and to wish you well in the next chapter of your life. Congratulations, Rosa.
Give her a big hand. And Ms. Han, before you ask Rosa Corrales to speak, I also wanted to add my congratulations. I had the privilege of working with Rosa Corrales for a number of years in the Ninth Council District with the previous council member, and your comment about her work ethic is absolutely correct, and her ability to build relationships with people and to be able to solve problems. And I know that your retirement is very well-earned, and I hope that you enjoy every single minute of it.
Thank you. Buenos dias.
Buenos dias.
Good morning. It's been a privilege and an honor for me as a public servant to the city of Los Angeles. I dedicated my time to work to better the life of our residents, not only in front of my house, but all over, wherever I went, in any way that I could help. I was a deputy, field deputy before, and then with Councilwoman Janice Hahn, community advocate, and I was the one who took care of illegal dumping, all the graffiti events, stopped the councilwoman evenings, nights, and covered the potholes, even the potholes before they come out. I go in the field, and before the residents start calling me, I go all over, all over, all over, and cover the potholes and broken cars, street trees, lights not working, or broken signs, vacant houses. Well, all of you know of that. So I just want to thank you, all of you, for all that you do, and we all continue to do what we're doing. And I really appreciate this, Councilwoman Janice Hahn.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
Okay. Gracias. Thank you.
Gracias.
You want to go in the back and take photos?
Yeah, I should probably do, go ahead.
Picture?
Should I do the mayor? Congratulations, Rosa Corrales. Our next presentation will be Council District 14. Mr. Huizar.
Would it be all right if I did a special presentation to the mayor of a city in France? Where's my, oh, here it is. And Tom Avant would do this, but he's not here. Just really quickly, thank you, Jose Huizar, for allowing me to present the certificate of welcome to Henry Ponce and his wife Sylvia, who are here from, tell me how you pronounce the city.
Eagle.
Thank you. Thank you. A beautiful city in Provence. The city is a city that has secluded squares, colorful village houses, narrow streets. It claims to have the largest numerous springs and fountains in the area, which adds to its beauty. And we are so pleased to have you here in the city of Los Angeles. And we know Margot Ombrooster brought you here, along with Mark, because your wife is Margot's cousin. And so we're very pleased to have you. So on behalf of all the city of Los Angeles, we want to welcome you to Los Angeles, and we hope that we can come visit you in your beautiful village as soon as possible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Would you like to take a picture? Would you like to speak to the residents of Los Angeles?
Apologize my poor English, because yes, we arrived yesterday very late. Thank you very much to be here among you. It's very great honor of my small village to be here. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Han. Mr. Huizar.
Welcome, Ms. Han.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning, Los Angeles. It's with great pleasure that I stand here today to introduce Los Angeles to two wonderful individuals who saw the need for a farmer's market in the community of Alcevano and worked hard to get one there. It is the first farmer's market in Council District 14 in over 11 years. We have one at Eagle Rock. Alcevano started, and within a few weeks, we also started one in the community of Bohai. But I'm here today to thank and to encourage Angie De La Tora and Melissa Chinchilla for their work that they've done at Alcevano Farmer's Market and getting it started. The honorary mayor of Alcevano is here, Ed Santillan, and he's really excited about this well. It is really a remarkable accomplishment. The idea first started and began in the Arts and Culture Committee of the local LA 32 Neighborhood Council. They came to my office asking for assistance on how to start a farmer's market, and we are very glad to help. Angie and Melissa knew this would be a big task, but they were determined to start the farmer's market, so they got to work. And we soon learned that these two individuals are truly visionaries, and they were determined to make it happen. With a marketing background and their company, Doze, they took this project head-on. They got vendors to participate and local support from the surrounding communities and organizations. They researched for months other farmer's markets in other parts of the city and other cities as well. And at the end, they knew that the one in Alcevano would be arts-focused and oriented. They designed a plan to expose the Alcevano community to healthy eating and the arts. And every week, there are bands playing, and we have farmers from Northern California who come to sell healthy vegetables and fruits to the local community. The Alcevano Farmer's Market has been up and running for a few weeks, and it is continuously growing. More and more people want to participate and be part of it. And as lifelong residents, Angie and Melissa are proud to say that they both grew up in Alcevano, and they are proud to say that they still live in Alcevano. And like many other people who live in Alcevano, you have generation after generation of people coming back to live in the great community of Alcevano. And this farmer's market adds to the beauty that is Alcevano. And so I wanted to thank both of them for their work and for bringing to Alcevano healthy eating habits and another great community event. So first, I want to present this congratulations certificate from the city of Los Angeles to Angie De La Tore. And her partner in crime. Let's give a big round of applause to Melissa Chinchilla. Congratulations.
We wanted to give thanks to Councilman Huizar and his office, and to The Voice newspaper, which is our local paper, and our main sponsor, Body Action, because this is truly a community event, and we couldn't have done it without them. Thank you.
We were happy to bring this farmer's market to our community. We believe that farmer's markets are community-based, so we're proud to say that two natives, as we're able to bring this to Alcevano. Thank you.
And who's with you? Want to introduce some of your colleagues? And who's here with you today?
This is my mom, Olivia De La Tore.
Welcome.
And these are my grandparents.
Hey, welcome to Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huizar. Our next presentation will be from Council District Six. Mr. Cargus.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. It gives me a great honor and pleasure to call up Dr. Jeffrey H. Hunt forward and his colleagues and friends over at Poly High School. We have the principal here. We have some of the teachers, coordinators. And this is a great day of celebration for us, because when you hear what I have to say about Dr. Hunt, you're going to realize why the city of Los Angeles is giving him a very, very well-deserved honor. Like many of us who grew up in very tough neighborhoods, then not Dr. Jeffrey Hunt, but just Jeffrey, grew up in a very tough neighborhood, working-class neighborhood, called Passaic, New Jersey. And one day, he was talking to one of his teachers, and the teacher said, and I quote, "Jeff, what are you planning to do with your life?" Thank God that person asked him that question, because it was this question that led him to attain a Bachelor of Science degree in physics from the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, otherwise known as MIT. And in 1979, he went on to get his master's degree and a PhD in 1988 from the University of California, Berkeley. In 1984, while working at his job, he met a beautiful woman named Rebecca Hernandez. And they loved ballroom dancing, got to know each other so well that they actually got married in 1986, and they've been married for 24 years. And in 1990, they became the proud parents of their daughter, Brianna Elizabeth Hunt, who's currently, again, in California, good place to go to school, at California University Davis. In 1990, Dr. Hunt established the Rockwell Education Motivation Program that had over 300 grammar school teachers participate in a one-week intensive science instruction. And he knew that it was necessary to continue working with the teachers if the material was actually going to be used in instruction in their classrooms. Also, Dr. Hunt knew that it was necessary for him to work with the students as individuals as well, to inspire them to have the confidence and the knowledge to know that they could be anything they wanted to be. Dr. Hunt has published three books, two encyclopedia articles, holds 41 United States patents, is a fellow of the American Physical Society, and is recognized as an expert in optical and nonlinear optical properties of condensed matter physics. Obviously, he's a very, very busy and a very important man. For the last 10 years, Dr. Hunt has been an invaluable mentor to generations of kids at Polytechnic High School in Sun Valley. He serves there as a volunteer educational counselor. As a result of his hard work with our youth, Dr. Hunt has been instrumental in getting 13 students to be accepted at the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, again, otherwise known to all of us as MIT. Dr. Hunt has changed the attitudes of students and their families by demonstrating that students from underserved communities might be accepted to a four-year university and also to one of the top institutions in the world. It's beyond measure and beyond words what Dr. Hunt has done for individuals and the community as a whole. I remember as a young man being inspired to go on to become an engineer, and I was able to fulfill that dream. But if it wasn't for certain teachers and certain mentors like Dr. Hunt, I perhaps would have never been there and perhaps would have never ended up here. So with that, I'd like to thank him for all of his wonderful work. Again, it's immeasurable, but at the same time, I'd like to invite some of his colleagues at Poly High School to say a few words as they work shoulder to shoulder with him, and they probably can give us some examples of some of the wonderful differences he's made in the lives of the entire campus, to entire families, and to the students who have gone on to believe his truth, that they can be anything they want to be. First, I'd like to invite the principal, Gerardo Loera.
Good morning. I'm Gerardo Loera. I'm the proud principal of Polytechnic High School. I want to thank for the recognition for Dr. Hunt. He's a technical fellow at Boeing, as was already announced. He is a true example of real partnership that we have with our community groups and those agencies and corporations that are willing to reach out and work with our school student body. Dr. Hunt has been able to build rapport and establish the relationships with our students. He knows them by name. As busy as he is, working for Boeing and doing the work there, he knows their personalities, their strengths, and the areas that our students need to work on and focus on in order for them to be competitive as they develop as leaders and move into the most prestigious universities in the country. Dr. Hunt has supported the admission of 13 students from Polytechnic High Schools into MIT and many other prestigious universities. If he were simply the MIT interviewer, which he helps our students with, we would indeed be grateful, but he does so much more. He meets with our students throughout their four years in high school, starting in the ninth grade. He visits classrooms, speaks with our students in small groups, and does individual counseling. He makes himself available to parents and family members. Dr. Hunt motivates, inspires, and gives students the confidence to strive for their best. His proactive assistance to students from socio-economically disadvantaged backgrounds has helped instill culture from hoping a few students might be accepted to a four-year college to one in which the top-notch scholastic results are anticipated. Thank you, Dr. Hunt. I'm going to introduce our accomplished magnet coordinator, Jenny Criswade, to say her words.
Good morning. I just wanted to share some words from a former student, Hector Beltran. Hector said, "When my college, when my high school college counselor asked me, 'What makes you different?' I wasn't sure what to answer. What she wanted to know was, why was I accepted to nine prestigious high schools when most of my peers weren't even considering going on to college? I graduated from MIT, and now I'm in a PhD program, and I can say now that what made me different was people like Dr. Hunt. Even though we may be able to quantify his success by counting the number of students he convinced to go to college, we will never be able to fully measure his influence. When someone like him steps into a person's life to spark the fire of confidence and intellectual curiosity, the fire never dies. People like myself that have been fortunate enough to have a person like Dr. Hunt in our lives feel the compulsion and excitement to continue to pass that start to as many as we can." Ms. Martin, the teacher from Polytechnic High School.
Hello. I'm going to share a few words of Juan Fuentes, who is my former student and is now in his junior year at MIT studying chemical engineering. Dr. Hunt's inspirational words changed my outlook on the future and pointed me in a whole new direction. I thought I knew where my life was going. I assumed I would finish high school and go on to study at a local state school, which was a big enough deal considering no one else in my family has gone to college. However, Dr. Hunt made me realize that I was settling. He made me believe that even I, a young Mexican immigrant living in downtown Los Angeles, could reach beyond the city lines into the outside world where anything is possible. As I sit here in my dorm and look out at the window, look out the window at the iconic illuminated dome where the words Massachusetts Institute of Technology enched into the solid gray stone, I can't believe that I have come this far. I must admit that I didn't get here on my own. I, along with countless other people, am forever indebted to Dr. Hunt for all he has done. I owe a large part of my future successes as an MIT graduate and a chemical engineer to him.
Thank you. And as you heard some of the quotes from some of the students in the lives that he's affected, again, as I said earlier, it's priceless. For all we know, had you, Richard, met Dr. Hunt, you might be an engineer too and with a doctorate degree from MIT. I know you went on to college and stuff like that. You became a teacher, and then we fell from grace and became politicians, all of us. But the fact of the matter is, it really does make a difference when a human being, an adult, actually takes the time to be more than just a teacher, but be a true mentor. And as a result, I probably would figure that there probably isn't a low-income community high school in Los Angeles, or perhaps throughout the country, that has sent so many kids in such a short period of time to MIT. And we all know, to get into MIT is very, very close to impossible. To actually graduate from there is another achievement. And for Dr. Hunt to have such a track record with the lives that he's touched really does exemplify why the city of Los Angeles is giving him this deserved recognition. And at this time, I'd like to bring to the podium the man of the hour, Dr. Hunt.
Mr. Cargus, before you do, Mr. Alarcon would like to say a few words.
You win. Yeah, Tony, I wish you were there sometimes. But let me just say that when I started at Poly, I transferred from St. Genevieve's High School, having completed two years of college preparatory classes. And when I met with a counselor at Poly, the first thing they tried to do was send me into woodshop. And I said, "No, I want to learn about computers." And I took a computer science class, and I wanted to take speed reading, although I've never learned how to read fast. I took a speed reading course. But that was on my own initiative. The sad truth is that most kids have to be inspired by somebody, and I certainly had my inspirational leaders along the way. But having graduated from Polytechnic, I can tell you, and my son graduated from Poly, and my daughter last year, excuse me, three or four years ago graduated from Poly, and my other daughter goes to school across the street. I can tell you that we've been tracking Poly's success, and we've seen not only in terms of their academic achievement, their passage on the AP program. It's really a tribute to a new generation, a new culture of college-going experience. When I started at Poly, the percentage of Hispanic students was about 27%, and hardly any of them went to college. A handful of us were able to get into college. Today, the college-going rate amongst Hispanics, with, I believe, the population is closer to 90% Hispanic, the college-going rate is far-
to ninety percent Hispanic, the college-going rate is far higher than it's ever been in Poly's history. And so I want to say thank you to you personally. I haven't had the chance to meet you, but I'm sure that you are creating high-capacity, lifelong learners, and that is going to be good for not just these students, but for the United States. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Cardenas, for your honoree.
Okay. I want to just say thanks to the L.A. City Council particularly. Thank you, Councilman Cardenas, appreciate it. Principal Bane and Jane, of course, everybody else here from Poly. I'll just say very briefly that since I'm in the fifty-plus category, I'm no longer a student making revolutions. I work with schools where I know I can get consistent results. Poly has been one of the schools that has just absolutely, not only embraced me and allowing them to help, and in fact, has taken the words that I've had and pushed it on out there. I can't do it myself, and without the support of the board of this amazing school, trust me, the results would not have been this great. Also, just want to mention very briefly, you know, thank my company, the Boeing Company, for allowing me the flexibility to do this. Obviously, I have this doing this in the daytime. Company's a pretty great place to work, I'll just, you know, mention that briefly. And just finally, I want to, you know, put a thanks to my darling wife, Becky, and my daughter Brianna. They couldn't be here today, unfortunately, but if you think it's easy to have a husband or a dad who's an overeducated geek, trust me, it's not, and want to thank both of them for putting up with my personality challenges and helping me, supporting me for doing this kind of effort as well. Thank you.
Once again, thank you, Doctor, and thank you for sharing your experience. Councilmember Alarcon, oddly enough, I was, when I got to my high school, San Fernando High School, just down the street, the first time I met my tenth-grade counselor, and she was going to start assigning me my courses, when I told her I wanted to be an engineer, she said, "No, you want to be a mechanic, don't you?" And she tried to put me in woodshop and metal shop and mechanic shop, and instead, thank God, I won that argument. I wish I had a Dr. Hunt that would argue for me, but I had to argue for myself. And subsequent to that, I did go to, not to MIT, I can't stand the weather, sorry. I went to a place just slightly warmer, UC Santa Barbara, and I did achieve my degree despite the negativity that some of my counselors and teachers tried to impose upon me. So it is very, very important that our young people meet and get to know many more people like Dr. Hunt. So thank you so much. And with that, I give to you this resolution on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, signed by all the electeds within the city. And again, much appreciation and gratitude toward you and your dedication of going above and beyond the call of duty. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. And as we make transition from this presentation to the next, I would like for us to welcome and recognize the Honorable Celeste Jimenez Peña de Amarante, the Council General of the Dominican Republic, who is sitting next to me. Welcome her. And to commend her for her work with the Fernando Pullum Performing Arts School, which enabled her to raise funds from these kids in the Ninth Council District to purchase food for needy people in the Dominican Republic. And her assistance was vital and ensured that food and medicine was purchased at humanitarian prices with a ten percent cost reduction for the people who live at the Asociación Infante Don Ley de Haiti Orphanage in Petit Quavo in Haiti. So I just wanted to welcome her and to thank her again for her humanitarian work. And now, Mr. Parks, for our final presentation today, Council District Eight.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I'd like to ask Joya DeFord to come up, also her family, and all of the Office of Finance to come up behind the, I'm sorry, Treasury, sorry, Department, Treasurer's Office to come up. Colleagues, today, we wanted to honor Joya for her many years of being the city's treasurer. As you know, she came to us at the time of the city charter and splitting the Office of Finance and Treasury Department into two separate departments. She came to us from the city of Long Beach, and prior to that, she was the chief financial, or the treasurer for the MTA. One of the things I think is so important, as we've seen her perform her task in the city, the investment strategies, the ability to revamp her department, and when she first arrived here, many of the positions were generic positions for city government, and she wanted to go on a path of creating a treasury-specific type of organization. So she's moved in that direction. It was not warmly received by some, but certainly the results cannot be denied. Joya received her bachelor's degree in accounting from Notre Dame. She corrected that mistake by going to USC to get her master's degree. She also continued her education at Concord University School of Law, where she's already passed the first-year student exam, the baby bar. She holds a variety of certificates in the sense of professional performance. She's been certified as a treasurer professional and certified government financial manager credentials. She's professionally affiliated with the Association of Financial Professionals, where she's a member of the Government Relations Committee and the Government Financial Officers Association, where she serves at the Executive Board. She's a chair of the Audit Committee and co-chair of the Women's Public Finance. She's also a board member of the California Municipal Finance Authority and an honorary trustee of the Long Beach Museum of Arts. She has been here, she's done a wonderful job, but she's also leaving us. She's going to the city of Atlanta to be the chief financial officer, which is kind of a combination of about five different jobs that we have in the city. It's the, come up here, Joya, sorry, don't mess this up, the Office of Finance, the Treasurer.
CAO.
The CAO.
Part of CAO.
And part of the CLA. So that's her job in Atlanta. And I told her that she should reflect on this, because around January, when it's twenty degrees in Atlanta, she wanted to think about sunny California. And so she said she grew up there, and she's prepared to go back, and her family's there. So we're going to miss her, having worked with her very closely in the Budget and Finance Committee. She's just done a wonderful job for the city of Los Angeles. So we wanted to honor her on her leaving, and also the fact that with her staff here, we wanted to say thank you from the Los Angeles City Council. Every elected official assigned this, want to say great job, best of luck and best wishes in your new.
Mr. Parks, and before you go on with your presentation, Mr. Rosendahl would like to say a few words.
Let me get. All I can say is, no, we don't want you to leave. You are terrific, you're absolutely fantastic. I've had the pleasure, obviously, in the last five years since I've been on the council, to work with you, and one of the hardest things is to lose good people, people who have truly made a difference, who are honest, who are smart, that work hard, that treat their people with respect, work with us, and give us information and empowerment so we can do our job. God bless you for all you've done for all of us in Los Angeles, and God bless you where you're going next, but it's a terrible loss to us. Thank you for being there.
All right, Mr. Weesar.
Congratulations, and thank you for all the work you've done for us, especially for me, who's coming from, sits on the Budget and Finance Committee. You've taken some very complicated and complex information and able to explain it to us in a very simple manner. You've had a very important role and job for this city, and I want to thank you for all the work you've done for us, and good luck on your future. And I agree with Mr. Rosendahl that a big no, but this is good for you and your career, and your new employer is going to be blessed with your skills that you're going to bring there. Congratulations again.
Thank you, and then also, I want to add my congratulations to you, too.
Thank you.
Let me get this photo. Everybody pull up here so we can, and we're going to do a more formal in the back.
Okay.
Thank you. Maybe we can open the roll and close the roll and all vote no, and make it official.
Right away.
Thank you, Councilmember Parks, and Madam President, members of the city council. Mixed emotions in leaving, I've tried to do my best, I've tried to empower the staff to do their best and to be courageous, because being the treasurer is not being everyone's best friend. Being treasurer means sometimes you just have to deliver the bad information, but you have to deliver it. Being treasurer means you give everyone the same information at the same time and let the policymakers figure out what to do with it. I couldn't have been as brave and as courageous if not for the support of my husband of over twenty years, Tom Klinger. And without his support, you know, I couldn't do this job. You know, he's always been very supportive. Some of my staff are not here because they're full of today, but I want to tell them thank you, thank you for being, you know, good stewards for the citizens for the city of Los Angeles, and I challenge them to do even better, because when I go to Atlanta, we're going to be competing.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. I'd just like to tell the people of Los Angeles that we've been very blessed to have Joya work for us and with us in this city and do such a tremendous, tremendous job. Again, I've said it before on this floor, and I'll say it again, you're a consummate professional, and in many senses of the word, we're very, very proud to call you a friend and a colleague. At the same time, we're sad to see you leave, but we're very happy for you, because I know for a fact that some of the ideas that you weren't able to get off the ground in the city of Los Angeles, they're welcoming and ready to run with it over there. So hopefully, we will stay in touch. You'll be able to show us that the ideas that you couldn't get off the ground here, they are working. I know that they're going to work, because I know what some of those ideas are. Please stay in touch with us so that we can now, hopefully, start to implement those things that you've tried really hard to do. Regardless, you've done a tremendous job, we've done a lot of wonderful things under your leadership, but we could have done more, so I apologize for that, and hopefully, we'll still get it right into the future, even without your leadership here, but with your leadership in demonstrating what you were able to do, should we allow you to do so. Congratulations.
Thank you, congratulations. That marks the end of our presentations for today. Before we go into public comment, why don't we take up item number eight, and our speaker on item number eight is Mr. Sax. Mr. Sax, please come forward.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sax. My question about item number eight, which is funding for landscaping medians to be cleaned on Wilshire Boulevard by Melrose and Highland Avenue, is the fact that you are allocating funds for salaries overtime to pay for this work. Overtime salaries? The last time you paid overtime salaries, well, not the last time, but one of the other times you paid overtime salaries was when you were providing traffic control officers for seven venues in the city of L.A., while people kept coming up here talking about the fact that you had numerous lists of fee waivers for public events. Overtime salaries for street median maintenance? It's ridiculous. If you need to pay overtime to do that, you need to find better management. Thank you.
There's no speakers in the queue on that item. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item.
Madam President, that brings us to item number nine, called Special by Councilmember Weesar.
Mr. Weesar, are you ready with your amendment?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. If we could add on the second paragraph after El Cerrano and Northeast area, so we would add "and Northeast area." It's just an amendment, verbal amendment. Thank you.
Okay, great, let's open the roll. As amended, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
What do we go to next?
Madam President, that brings us back to public comment.
All right, we'll take public comments, so then we can recess this meeting and then go into the special. Mr. Sax, you're our first speaker. Dr. Williams, you're after Mr. Sax. Dr. Williams, you're a little bit closer if you want to come up. All right, Mr. Sax is here, Dr. Williams is next. All right, Mr. Sax, you're our first speaker.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sax. It's another meeting being held today at city council. You might have heard the introductions and the beginning of the meeting, where city council was, where you can view this meeting, but unfortunately, you didn't get to see the disorganization that occurs, and the fact that another meeting was scheduled to start at ten o'clock began at ten fifteen, even with the presentations. You have some kind of responsibility to the public to start your meetings at ten o'clock, unless you post the meetings to start at ten fifteen. Then you could start them at ten thirty, but you should have some kind of responsibility. Speaking of responsibilities, again, we go back to the DWP. October first is fast approaching, considering you're going to be taking two weeks off in August. That's, October first will be the end, yeah, the end of the calendar budget year, the end of the first quarter of the fiscal year 2010, 2011, and the start of the calendar year, third quarter. But it's also the time you might be considering more layoffs. But considering that fact, I'm surprised there's nobody here from the city, unions, regarding the twenty million dollars you have yet to accept from the DWP that was offered by David Freeman, when he had the hearings here regarding the E-CAP increase that DWP so desperately needed. I do believe he said twenty million dollars in city council chambers, and yet, it's yet to be paid. So when October first comes around, and you're discussing how you're going to balance the fiscal budget year, twenty million dollars is going to come up. Don't lay anybody off, because you're going to have to explain why you didn't take twenty million dollars. That's a real nut to crack.
Thank you. Dr. Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams from El Cerrano, you know where. Over thirty years ago, I decided to make my home in Los Angeles. But what makes a house into a home? It's family, pride, the things that we bring to it. Charles Loomis, a long time ago, bought a whole bunch of things to Los Angeles, and he made a home for them. It was called the Southwest Museum. It was the first museum of Los Angeles. But what makes a museum? Is it the building? Is it the land? No. It's the people that help it, the people that support it, and the collections in it. The Autry National Center has made a house over in Griffith Park, and we can discuss the land lease agreement ad nauseam. However, they didn't bring the pride of being the first, they didn't bring the collection. But now, they want to take the collection from Northeast L.A., Highland Park, and take it and put it in Burbank, because they know that eventually, they can bring it back to Griffith Park. And so they will make their house into a home in Griffith Park, but take away our house, our home, and the pride of place in Highland Park. I would highly recommend that the council ask the city attorney to review the land lease agreement and the compliance of the terms and conditions of the Autry National Center with that agreement, because I believe they are in default. Thank you.
All right, we'll go to Van Nuys for Wayne Spindler.
All right, can you hear me? Okay, great. I'm over here in the Van Nuys office, and here we have another meeting today, where we started off from ten o'clock to almost eleven o'clock, and what do we have? Presentations of what? Irrelevant business? Has nothing to do with the city. Yesterday, there was a committee meeting for the Energy and Environment Committee. Only two members showed up, and Cardenas was the second member, and he came twenty minutes late. Alarcon, Corretts, and Krikorian didn't even bother to show up. What was at stake? Nothing much. Only a hundred and fifty-five million dollar bond measures and contracts ranging from seven million up to fifteen point six million. In the totality, it was almost two hundred million dollars of business. Questions were asked. Various witnesses showed up from the various departments of Only two members showed up and Cardenas was the second member and he came 20 minutes late. Alarcon, Corretts, and Krikorian didn't even bother to show up. What was at stake? Nothing much. Only $155 million bond measures and contracts ranging from $7 million up to 15.6 million. In the totality, it was almost $200 million of business. Questions were asked. Various witnesses showed up from the various departments of DWP. Nothing was done. Why? There was no quorum. And yet, here we go again today on a Friday where we've got layoffs, we've got furloughs, we've got closed libraries. Today in the Van Nuys office, LABDS doesn't even have inspectors to go out because of furloughs. The roads are crumbling. The city and the two districts I looked at with CD 12 and 3 have lost thousands of businesses. You have street fronts for lease, for sale. The place is crumbling and what happens? You can spend the first hour of business to let the few public speakers who bother to show up, they have to wait through all of this. And what do we got? We've got a guy from France, we've got another person retiring, and it doesn't mean a damn thing. You've got business to attend to and you need to do that or we're going to lose everybody, every business in this city. So stop filibustering these meetings and hold the public hearing first. Thank you.
Back to City Hall for Walter Bechtel.
I wanted to say something about some feelings that have been coming over the radio that people should apologize, and this comes from the executive office of the President, but it's still coming. It's all on the radios and it's something that he and everyone wishes that people should They should not be or say anything that is derogatory or racist or prejudiced, and I happen to agree with that. But I think one needs to be a little more introspective there that, as one famous preacher once said, "Let it begin with me." I remember there are a lot of things that these people say and this one guy is now being sued and that's fine, that's fine and good. He shouldn't have tried to say that somebody said something she didn't really intend to say. So I just want to quote back from August of 2008 on the campaign trail. There were two candidates there and the one candidate said, she said, "The only difference between a soccer mom and a bulldog is that a soccer mom wears lipstick." And the other candidate said in response to that, "You can put lipstick on a pig and it still doesn't mean it's not a pig," essentially calling the other candidate a pig with lipstick. That is an obvious racial slur and I want to say, in this country, all men are created equal, from the lowest pauper to the President of the United States himself, and all are culpable under the law, either be it through edict or in a court decided case. And if somebody needs to apologize for that sort of thing, everybody needs to.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. That marks the end of our public comment period for the regular meeting. Mr. Clerk, I believe we need to recess the regular meeting and then call the roll on the special meeting.
Madam President, you are correct. Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Corretts, LeBange, Parks, Perry, Rice, Rosendale, Smith, Wesson, Zion, Garcetti, 10 members present in the quorum. Madam President.
All right. What's the first item on the special meeting?
Item number 12 is an item for which a public hearing has been held. The Energy and Environment Committee report has been submitted and distributed to council. A public hearing was not held in committee.
All right, I'll call that special. Mr. Cardenas.
What's the action on this item?
I'm going to come down out of the chair. I was just going to go through the agenda and I'm going to come down on the chair on 12.
Just the item that was heard in energy yesterday?
Yeah. And then, next item, Mr. Clerk.
Items 12, excuse me, items 13 and 14 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, let's open the roll on 13.
Cards.
Do we have to vote on whether or not to hold a public hearing? So open the roll on item 13 as to whether or not we're going to have a hearing on that, public hearing? All right, Mr. Alarcon's calling it special. All right, fine.
Should we hold 14?
You want me to hold 14?
Just for a second, there may be a amended motion.
Okay, great. All right, Mr. Parks requests that we hold 14 and then Ms. Han would cover me in the chair so I can come down on 12.
To vote.
Ms. Han?
Yeah.
So, Madam Chair, item 12 is now before us. Okay, great. Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Chair. We reviewed this item yesterday in the special meeting for energy and environment. And as you know, we served jurisdiction over five board items and two of them are before us today. I still have unanswered questions regarding this item after yesterday's Energy and Environment Committee meeting. So I'm referring the portion of this item regarding the issuance of the power system revenue bonds back to my committee. But I am asking today to move the payment of insurance premiums forward today as the policy itself expires on Saturday. So it is critical that payment be made today, even though I believe and I think my colleague will also discuss this, that the way this matter was scheduled is constructed in such a way that it didn't allow us the 21 days that we may or may not have needed in order to 245 an item. Is there anybody here from the Department of Water and Power? If you can come on up to the middle table. We talked about the timing issue for this item in committee yesterday and how this item should have had allowed for time for 245. And we were informed that the commission did not meet on June 6th and we discussed how they might have had other options short of a quorum in order to move this item forward. We're going to work together with the chief legislative analyst office to ensure that failure to achieve a quorum does not affect the ability in the future to deal with ministerial items so that we're not put in a position as a city council to have to worry about having 21 days in order to review a matter. To the gentlemen at the middle table, can you just identify yourself?
Avery Newman, Senior Risk Manager, Water and Power.
Acknowledging that I understand that payment has to be made today and also acknowledging that I expressed concern yesterday that I felt that the construct of canceling the June 6th meeting and the outcome resulting thereof could have been avoided because apparently, you know, there are other ways to get commission members to participate. So we could have moved this forward and we're going to correct the situation on a going-forward basis. But what I want to know is ratepayers in various parts of the city have made damage claims against DWP because of water main breaks and power surges. Does this policy cover DWP for this kind of liability?
Absolutely, it does.
Okay. And then, do you still have outstanding claims?
Yes, we do.
Do you have any sense of how many claims you still have outstanding? How about this? Do you have any sense of how much longer it will take to resolve those claims?
That I could not say. It could be a matter of months or it could be a matter of years.
All right, this is what I'll do then. Please share this when you go back. I'm going to put in a motion to see how many outstanding claims are left from Ventura and Coldwater Canyon just to name the highest profile break over the last year and then how many outstanding claims you still have and then your timeline for responding to those claims.
Yes.
All right, that's my only comment. And again, to pay the premium and then the rest of it goes back to committee for further examination.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas, do you want to speak on this item? I had you up on the queue, I don't know why. Okay. All right, so with that, well, you want to send it back to committee? Pay the premium and then the balance goes back to committee. Okay, so we have that item before us? No?
Well, we need a motion for anything that...
You want to make that official?
I'll make a motion to move the committee report regarding the portion, only the portion that includes payment of the premium before Saturday and the balance of the report then goes back to the Energy and Environment Committee.
Okay, there's a second.
Just for clarification, on that premium item, your motion would approve of the board's action?
Approve the board's action only with respect to payment of the premium before this coming Saturday.
Is there a second on Ms. Perry's motion? Mr. Cardenas, that's a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We have this item before us. Wait, 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 wait. Is that a legal? Thank you. Okay, we have cards on this item. Arnold Sax and Wayne Spindler.
Thank you, Madam President. It's interesting why you're taking action on this. When do you expect to take action again on the $20 million that the previous chair, the head of the DWP offered to the city as part of getting the E-CAP raise? And when do you expect to take action on the now sitting head of the DWP, his actions regarding the $300 million, I believe it was over $300 million in excess that he found in the DWP budget, which should have been accounted for before the DWP came to the City Council requesting an increase in E-CAP or an increase at all? When are you planning on taking those kinds of actions to step up and have the DWP act in a more transparent, and I hate that word, active so that the public, that, you know, that group that you're supposed to represent, the public gets a fair bargain for what they're getting if there is such a thing in politics? Again, the $300 million in excess that Mr. Butner again testified in front of council chambers that he found in less than two months or a little over two months of action on the DWP, the head of DWP, and the $20 million that the ex-chair, the ex-head, Mr. Freeman, who hopefully enjoyed his lunch, claimed in council chambers also that the city would get as part of the E-CAP raise. Thank you, and I know you're acting right away.
Thank you. And now we have Van Nuys, Wayne Spindler.
Yes, thank you. The way you're going to do this payment, I think is illegal. And the reason it is is because you cannot take...
Can you take these?
Can you hear me?
Who laughed today?
Okay. So they have a, you're trying to take the issue of the amendment under D, which was yesterday's item number D. In the special committee yesterday, you didn't have a quorum, number one. Number two, you're going to agree to give $7.2 million and write a check today, yet you're going to refer the item back to the committee that didn't have a quorum yesterday. The problem with this is, and I think the city attorney would agree, is that this would be an illegal payment because you're not noticing this motion correctly. This is, there's only a quorum today of 10 votes. You're having five items that were on yesterday's agenda. So nobody can really differentiate between sending the item on the insurance back for consideration but separating the very payment of the 7.2 million premium. You cannot have legislation withheld and then pay the money without the legislation being passed. And I think that you're putting the city in potential trouble if somebody comes forward and seeks to recoup that 7.2 million. If item D, which is the payment for the premiums, is going to be approved today, the entire matter has to be affirmed and that's what the city attorney basically just told you. So if you're going to ratify it, ratify it. But if you have disagreement with the issue, then don't make the payment, send it back to committee and then make the payment. And there are other items that were taken up, including a renovation of the John Farrow Building, which has not been even discussed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, would you like to clarify for the council what the motion is and what's before us?
Certainly, Madam President. We have a motion made by Councilmember Perry and seconded by Councilmember Cardenas to approve the Board of Water and Power Commissioners' July 22nd, 2010, action relative to the payment of insurance premiums to Kircher, Campbell &amp; Associates Insurance Brokerage, LLC or Energy Insurance Mutual. The amount shall not exceed $7.2 million. We also have a recommendation to urge the Board of Water and Power Commissioners to consider, when issues of urgency are pending, all feasible options, including teleconferencing, to obtain a quorum in order to allow the council sufficient time to exercise its Charter Section 245 privileges without limitation.
And what about the rest going back to committee?
It's there already, ma'am.
Okay. So does that clarify the intent of your motion, Ms. Perry?
You guys good? City attorneys, okay? Okay.
All right, so that item is before us now, item 12. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Madam President, that brings us to item number 13 called special for cards.
Mr. Alarcon, why don't you speak first because we have a number of cards on this item?
Yes, councilmembers, this is a 12-vote item. We obviously do not have 12 votes. However, we would like to conduct the first reading and allow the people to testify with regard to the business tax holiday. It would be my intent to, subsequent to their testimony, withhold on unanimous consent, move it directly into second reading so there is no confusion, and take up the matter next week. But for the time being, just let me say that this is expanding what essentially was a tax holiday that most of you supported a few years ago. This expands on that idea. If it's good for some, it's probably good for all and the idea is that we can stimulate new investment by providing a three-year business tax exemption for all businesses, not just those that have the $500,000 limit. We believe, and there was a study conducted at USC that showed that this would have a positive impact in our revenue, but more importantly, it would create more jobs for the city of Los Angeles. And by the way, since these people aren't coming to Los Angeles now, there really is no loss and there would be a tremendous opportunity for us to be in a better position to compete for businesses that are considering the entire region, but exclude Los Angeles because of some of the restrictions that we place on businesses currently. So I want to thank Mayor Villarosa for allowing Greg Smith and I to introduce this motion. And you notice I dropped the Smith word on you because anytime Smith and I agree, it's probably something that you can agree to too. So with that, I would like to open the public comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Arnold Sax, why don't you come up and while you're walking up, why don't we go to Wayne Spindler and Van Nuys? Arnold Sax, you'll be our next speaker. So why don't you make your way up here?
Thank you, okay. We have the, this was much discussed in several meetings before about trying to do something with the business community and trying to get jobs here. And what we have is there were two things that were mentioned, which was giving a three-year holiday regardless of the amount of income the business has versus a financial limit. What you should do, however, is address the issue of businesses like Northrop Grumman that were going to move out of the city of Los Angeles if they did not get the same tax rate that competing cities within L.A. County were going to give them. What should be done with this is to take and do what the committee had recommended amongst the various ad hoc committees that were convened by the city who testified that the city of Los Angeles, out of 70-some different cities in L.A. County, has the highest and most business unfriendly tax system in the city. So what we should do is take the city that has the best policies and ratify that for the city of Los Angeles and offer that not just to new businesses, but to offer it to current businesses so that if you have a current business that's contemplating leaving, they would give notice of that effect. they would give notice of that effect if they want to leave. But if you were to give them back the same exemption that you would give a new business for three years, and they would agree to spend that money for goods and services of the city of Los Angeles, then that should be put into that proposal. And that would do much to help a lot of businesses, especially the Budweiser Brewery and other businesses that are here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. We're back to Arnold Sachs. And Mr. Sachs, this is your last minute for today. He's okay?
How can it be my last minute?
Spindler, okay, great, all right, fine. Mr. Sachs, you have three minutes.
Thank God you're not an accounting major. I'm looking at this, and I'm saying regarding tax exemptions for new business, there was a new business that just opened up a couple of months ago in the LA Live complex. The hotel that just opened up. So, they would benefit from these tax exemptions because it's a new business. But they also benefit because you waived the 14% bed tax. So, these new businesses that open up, are they eligible for other waivers and other taxes within the tax role revenue system that the city has? I mean, how much in tax waiver did that hotel get? We know that it's a new business, so they got waivers there. The bed tax is a waiver there. Oh, by the way, isn't the city suffering from the recession with funding for its general fund? That being said, with the waivers for the fees, what about the increases for DWP on utilities? Will you replace the tax exemptions that they get with the fee increases that they receive from DWP? And maybe you could consider something for landlords because you've yet to address the landlord-tenant situation and the 3% guidelines you use to raise rents in that situation. So, maybe you could consider a tax exemption that would enhance the ability of the landlords or the renters so that landlords would not be able to raise their rents 3%. They could get a break. But why help the small business people?
Nicole Tehenian, Mel Cohen, Lori Hughes, Ann Williams, Beverly Kenworthy, and to close, Pete Repovich.
Good morning. On behalf of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, which represents nearly 1,000 businesses in the Hollywood area, I'm here to express my strong support of the business tax holiday. A creative and business-friendly initiative like this holiday is precisely what the city of LA needs to drive economic growth in our city. The Hollywood Chamber has helped build one of the strongest business communities in LA, and we view the business tax holiday as a great tool for continued efforts to bring new business and new jobs to the city. As you know, the city's current business tax structure has served as a deterrent, keeping many companies from locating within city limits. The city's Business Gross Receipts Tax places an onerous burden on new businesses in the city when compared to surrounding cities and other large municipalities which do not have such a tax. Given the already dire economic situation the city is facing, it's imperative that the city do all it can to attract and retain new jobs. Expanding the new business tax exemption would send a strong message to the broader business community that the city is taking steps to become more welcoming to businesses and desires to support new and growing businesses. The proposed business tax holiday is a step in the right direction for the city. The time to act is now. The Hollywood Chamber strongly urges your support.
Mel, Mel Cohen? Is Mel still here? And then Lori Hughes. And after Lori is Ann Williams.
Good morning. My name is Mel Cohen. I'm a board member of the Valley Industry Commerce Association, and I'm here on behalf of VICA today. Also, I'm a member of the Business Tax Advisory Committee, BTAC, and I'm speaking on their behalf also. VICA is here today to express our strong support for this motion to amend the city's new business tax exemption by lifting the $500,000 qualification threshold and extending the exemption to three years. This innovative initiative, paired with the recent Enterprise Zone expansion in the San Fernando Valley, will have a significant impact on the success of the local business community. VICA's mission is to enhance the economic vitality of the greater San Fernando Valley region and these business-friendly decisions by the city align with our efforts. Also, this exemption affects the entire city. VICA plans to welcome and support the new businesses that choose the San Fernando Valley as a result of the business tax holiday and the benefits from the state Enterprise Zone expansion. We hope this will lead to the creation of new jobs and spur economic growth in our region. Therefore, with the stated reasons above, VICA respectfully requests and supports this motion. The Business Tax Advisory Committee, Incentives Committee, brought this tax holiday concept forward to us. BTAC unanimously supports implementation of the incentive to remove the $500,000 cabin, extends the credit to three years. BTAC appreciates the expediting of this measure through committee. As you know, BTAC was formed in January of 2010, and our marching orders were to be open-minded, creative, and rapid in conducting our business. In six months, we have moved several matters to job development and thank them for moving forward to this body. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Lori Hughes, and then Ann Williams. And after Ann Williams will be Beverly Kenworthy.
Good morning, council. I'm Lori Hughes. I'm the Executive Director of Gateway II LA Business Improvement District, the Century Boulevard Corridor. And I'm here today in support of the proposed business tax holiday. First, I would like to thank Councilman Smith and Alarcon for introducing the business tax holiday motion, and thank Councilman Rosendahl for his support, and the council for considering the motion. The Century Boulevard Corridor includes about 1.25 million square feet of office space, and 30% of that is vacant. This is not a new problem with the current economy. This is something that we've been dealing with since the loss of the aerospace industry in our area. Our buildings have the lowest leasing rates in the city of LA, and we still find it difficult to compete because we're competing with our neighbors to the south that are other cities, like most specifically El Segundo. El Segundo enjoys newer buildings, business taxes that are one-fifth of what are posed in the city of LA, not to mention a well-deserved reputation for being business-friendly. The expansion, or the recent expansion of the state Enterprise Zone is a step towards helping all of our businesses compete. But the key to attracting new business to our office buildings is this business tax holiday. We urge you all to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Williams.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Ann Williams with the Central City Association, representing 450 businesses and employing over 350,000 people in Los Angeles. We've submitted a formal letter on this matter, but we wanted to also be here today to show our support for the business tax holiday. For decades, Los Angeles' archaic business tax system has been a major deterrent to doing business in the city, and the surrounding municipalities have taken advantage of this weakness by successfully luring businesses to their borders. If Los Angeles wants to compete in an economy where a company's physical location is less and less important, it needs to make it attractive to do business here. Despite some gains, businesses are still extremely hesitant to launch in this economy. And a three-year breather on city taxes may be exactly the thing to tip the scale in favor of economic expansion for businesses considering opening in or moving to Los Angeles. The Central City Association loudly applauds this effort to show the investing public that Los Angeles is truly open for business. Thank you.
Beverly Kenworthy.
Beverly Kenworthy with the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to thank councilmembers Alarcon and Smith for introducing the business tax holiday. We believe this is an excellent first step in attracting and retaining business here in Los Angeles. We'd also like to say that this is a great first step. We have a Business Tax Advisory Committee that is looking at comprehensive reform, and that is where the rest of this work needs to be done. And we look forward to your continued support as we move forward to make LA more business-friendly. Thank you.
Peter Repovich.
Good afternoon. Peter Repovich, Director, Los Angeles Police Protective League. Appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I applaud the efforts by this council and Greg Smith and Councilman Alarcon to do whatever they can to try to bring business to this city. It's vital that this city, out of anywhere else in the state, be the preemptive move to make sure that business gets regenerated and restarted and going in a robust way. We have an opportunity by your vote today and ongoing improvements in business tax after today to make this city the place to be. We do everything we can to try to protect the city from a crime point of view, but one of the most important things is small business, which is the economic engine for this city. So, the Los Angeles Police Protective League, our membership, support this wholeheartedly and more that you can do in this regard in order to get great jobs here and business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Repovich. And that is the end of our speaker cards. First person on the queue is Mr. Coretts.
Well, thank you, Madam President. And I have some questions. And I should first say, to set the stage for them, that I'm sort of an extremist in a pro-business direction generally. And if you look at the city of West Hollywood, for instance, which is not on this list, compared to the other cities, I actually was successful in getting West Hollywood to, and continues to this day, have a zero utility users tax. And although I was not successful after a while in keeping their business tax at zero, I thought it was a significant marketing tool, and I was successful in keeping it at a very low number. Nonetheless, the city of Los Angeles is now dependent, as we struggle to get through our budget year to year, on these business taxes. So, the question is, have we actually done adequate analysis to make us certain that this will be a net revenue generator? Intuitively, we say yes. The question is, have we done some things like looking at whether we will be attracting businesses that crowd out other existing businesses that are paying the full freight and then for three years won't be getting it? Have we ever done anything to survey some of the many businesses that took advantage of this tax to see whether they came to the city partially because of this tax? Whether they weren't aware of it at all, and it had no impact that they came to the city because that was their plan? We haven't really looked at those questions. And also, whether we should be looking at doing more to retain our existing business base, which has been one of our problems that over the years, many significant industries have left completely? Or whether our focus should be on attracting new ones? I'm not sure that we've really done any of the analysis that we should have before taking this step, and whether we've just gone on the intuitive basis, well, more tax breaks will bring in more businesses. But I'm not sure if we've actually done the analysis to see whether there are people out there that are thinking about coming or not, and this is just what they need, and whether the ones we've done have actually had the impacts we think it has. So, I'd like to hear more about what analysis we've done, and if we haven't done any of those kinds of analysis, I'd really like to see us do that before. Because right now is the time when, if we lose more revenue in the short term, this is when it'll bite us the most while we're struggling. And if it may benefit us a little more in the long term, we really need to know what I think the real numbers are as we are still in this recession. We'll probably be in it for two or three years. Whether this helps us pull out of that recession or whether this just costs us revenue? And from what we've done so far, I'm not entirely clear.
Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Madam President. And I think I want to echo most of what Mr. Coretts said. Let me start by saying that clearly, our business tax in this city is in vital need of significant reform. And clearly, our principal objective should be trying to create a more business-friendly environment that will create jobs in this city. And I think all of us will certainly agree on that. And I think that business tax reform is an important step in that direction. And I, myself, was the author of a $500 million tax incentive in Sacramento that has spurred significant job growth in Southern California already. So, I very much believe in this approach, and I think that this is something that we ought to be doing. But I do think that there are just far too many unanswered questions for me to be able to support this at this time. And I think we do need to do significantly more analysis. By way of example, we have a report today from Finance that indicates that the existing program has resulted in total credits of $46,500,000. But there's nothing in that analysis that indicates whether a single job was created because of that expenditure. Maybe it has been. Maybe it's been significant job growth, but we don't know. No one in this room knows whether a single job has been created because of that program. We don't know, as we sit here, whether there are relative better or worse impacts depending on the size of the business. But yet, we're going to lift the cap from 500,000 to infinity. Is there some appropriate level of business that this would have the greatest impact on? We don't know. Is there some, you know, is 3 million the right threshold? Is 10 million? Is unlimited? We don't know. There's been no analysis of the competitive impact on existing businesses, and especially small businesses. And the USC study that was relied upon, and it's not, it's more of a survey of the authority, it's not really a study of this particular ordinance. This USC report itself says that all of its assumptions are based on whether or not this is structured correctly and whether or not we eliminate the risk of crowding out existing business. And yet, we don't know whether this measure will crowd out existing businesses. Why three years? Why not five years? Why not 10 years? Why not forever? If a company is making a citing decision about whether or not to come to Los Angeles, a three-year tax holiday may influence that. But consider that they can settle in Burbank or one of the surrounding areas and have a forever tax holiday. So, is three years going to be sufficient incentive? Or is it going to be a giveaway? We don't know, as we're standing here. So, I think that this is a, this can be a step in the right direction. This can be an important jobs-development tool. But I don't see why we would move forward now until some of these very fundamental, basic questions of fiscal analysis are completed. We need to know whether this will create jobs. We need to know whether it will be a cost-effective way to create jobs. We need to know whether it will be net revenue increase or decrease, and we're just guessing right now. So, that, to me, is not a sound basis to make policy. And I think we need to continue our work on this, get some of these questions answered, and then come back when we actually know whether or not the objective that we all agree to and our intuitive interest in doing this is in fact correct and supported by data.
Mr. Cardenas.
First of all, I'd like to commend this council because we have been extremely diligent about making sure that we reduce the complications of our business taxes in the city. And we have, in fact, reduced business taxes in the city of Los Angeles and actually eliminated business taxes for well over 50% of the small, well, over 70% of the smallest businesses in the city of Los Angeles. So, I think that we are being as aggressive as we possibly can. But we are not activists, ladies and gentlemen. We are policymakers. And when you're making policy, these questions that have arisen need to be asked, and then we have to figure out what some semblance of understanding is to what the ramifications are, and at least get some answers. And with all due respect, I am not in any way saying that we should not make any move without having all of the 100% answers answered. Because to me, that is just an excuse. That's just an excuse. But obviously, there are a lot of unanswered questions. Some of the things that come to mind to me as we have the staff come up, I'd like the CEO or the CLA, or maybe if I can bother the chairman with this question, Budget, the Budget Committee. The question I have... Budget Committee, the question I have the staff is, what is the amount of business tax that was budgeted for last year's budget or that we actually received for last year's budget? And how much of the business tax is budgeted as far as budgeting concerned? How much business tax income are we anticipating in the current budget year to the nearest $10 million, if we can get a rough estimate? Okay, while we're waiting for staff to come up, whether it's the Finance Department and C.A.O., C.L.A., it doesn't matter to me. It's just a ballpark question, not an accurate question to the nearest $1 million. One of the things that I'd like to say is that, you know, to call this a holiday really isn't so much a holiday. I don't know too many people who go on vacation for three years. This is really more of a tax exemption for three years. So, the fact of the matter is, what concerns me is whether or not businesses who are here today might get a little jealous and start saying, "Me too."
Yeah.
And that's why I want to know how much money the city of Los Angeles is counting on, expecting and spending and budgeting within our budget. Because what I'm concerned, as a former city of Los Angeles business owner myself, you know, I would like to get an exemption for three years or one year or for six months or six years or what have you myself, when I owned a business, but the thing that I would hate to do is cause some consternation of jealousy amongst the businesses who have been employing people, have been paying taxes, they have been in fact working really hard to keep their businesses open and benefiting our economy in this city. So, as staff assembles, again, to the nearest $10 million-ish, how much money did we budget last year in business tax of this category, which is the business tax category generically? And then also, in this year's budget that just got finished and passed through the council and signed by the mayor, how much did we expect in the business tax budget for this current budget year?
Antoinette Cristobal, Office of Finance.
Can you pull the speaker up?
Yes, yes.
My phone, a little close.
Antoinette Cristobal, Office of Finance. For last fiscal year, the budget was $426 million for business tax receipts. And I don't have the final numbers, but I think we're close to about $422 million. So, we almost met the budget target for last year.
So, bottom line is, the budget of the city of Los Angeles, and that is, that goes to the general fund, correct?
That's general fund.
And roughly to the nearest $100 million, what's the general fund that we budgeted this year, roughly?
I'm trying to confirm it, but I think it's $411 million.
Okay, I'm sorry, just the general fund budget.
Oh, the general fund budget overall?
Yeah.
$4.3 billion.
$4.3. So, actually, our business tax is coming out to be almost exactly 10-ish percent of the entire general fund budget. And with the general fund, we fund libraries, which we had to cut. We fund the police department, which we didn't cut. We fund fire department, which we cut a little bit. We fund our parks and recreation departments and plant and arts and all kinds of things. That's what our general fund does. And the reason why I'm concerned about the "me too" attitude is, we are counting on $400 million. And I know that some of you business people have been working on this for over a decade now. It kind of turns your stomach to hear that the city of Los Angeles is collecting $400 million from our precious businesses. But what the heck? That's the law. That's what's going on. But the fact of the matter is, we depend on that to pay for police, to pay for streets and roads, to pay for libraries, all these kinds of things because it's general fund money. So, I will end with this. My concern with this is, it's a great idea. I think we need to move forward with this idea, but I think that we need to be a little bit more eyes wide open about some more of the answers to this. And also, I'd like to see an analysis on communities that have done such a thing as much as three years reprieve for new businesses when they're competing with old businesses and the effect on the "me too" attitude out there. Because I'd hate to see businesses who are on the brink of leaving but are hanging in there, and all of a sudden, they see somebody move in across the street that they're competing with, and all of a sudden, they don't have to do that, and they say, "You know what? I am going to go somewhere else, and I hope they don't go to Arizona because we're not going to do business with them anyway." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning.
Good morning.
Couple more minutes left. What would be the downside of us going forward with this today?
I don't think that there really is a downside, frankly, because in just looking at the businesses that currently do not qualify for the new business exemption, the existing one, on average, the past three years, there only have been about 45 businesses that would have qualified. So, you're talking about a small number of businesses who have gross receipts over $500,000 that have come into the city has not benefited. And in just looking at the taxes, the total taxes that were paid by those 45 businesses, it was around $273,000 combined, so, in principle. So, in that regard, you're talking about probably medium-sized businesses at best that would qualify. We have not had any large Fortune 500 companies that have come into the city. So, I really think that this really presents an opportunity for the city overall in bringing new businesses in and of course, you know, raising the cap and extending it to three years.
The enterprise zones, how does that relate to that? We opened up one around the LAX, I had butler there. I was real happy because it doesn't send opportunities for people to come and create businesses and obviously create jobs and affect everything. What's the relationship between the enterprise zones and this?
Well, the enterprise zones, they get special tax breaks over and above what other businesses would get who pay taxes, so, and it's tied mainly to the federal and state incentives that are offered as well. But that's very limited to that particular area. In this particular case, with this new business exemption, it would apply not only to businesses in the enterprise zone, but businesses throughout the city of Los Angeles.
That sounds exciting. And $426 million is what we're taking in now from businesses?
$426 million was budgeted for the past fiscal year, and we don't have the final numbers just yet, but in terms of what we know that's come in so far, that's attributed to last fiscal year, it's around $422 million. So, we almost met the original budgeted target for business taxes.
And what happens to a business that's already there, thriving, paying good taxes and all, where we'll throw the ballot, relationship to a new business that would come in that maybe has incentives right next to it? Would it impact them negatively? Would they be jealous, upset? Should we give them a break? How do you deal with existing revenue stream from existing businesses?
Well, I think that's being dealt with with the Business Tax Advisory Committee, as was indicated by Mr. Cohen, who is a member of B-TAC, that the Business Tax Advisory Committee, they are actually looking at a number of tax measures that will help existing businesses. And I know that those will be coming forward in the near future to council, so there definitely will be benefits to existing businesses. But we do, we do need to do more to attract new businesses, especially given the dismal results over a three-year period with only 45 new businesses with gross receipts over $500,000 coming into the city. And given this economic climate that we're in, I think this presents an opportunity for those larger businesses to come into the city to get a three-year tax relief with the expectation that they're going to be here for a longer period of time.
Okay. The last question is, in the heart of my district, I have a town called Santa Monica, and Santa Monica brings in 200,000 cars because they've incented the business community. They've become the job capital of the West Side. They're very happy about it. I'm very envious of it. Have we looked at Santa Monica and how they've done it to incent people or Culver City, which also has a strip going into my district, about what methods they use or what tax structures they use, what incentives they use that have made them rather robust considering, you know, they're in the heart of our city? Have we learned anything from them that we could apply?
Well, that is actually being looked at presently by the Business Tax Advisory Committee in terms of looking at what competing cities offer and taking that into consideration in their overall recommendations for potential tax breaks to existing businesses.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Let me ask, did we, on the report that's before us today on the committee, have we got any information on instruction number three to give us some idea of how many businesses have taken advantage of the $500,000 cap? Could you share that with us?
Yes, sir. That report was actually released to council, I think it was yesterday, so I apologize that it was released late. But the new business exemption has been in existence since tax year 2001, and as a result of it, since 2001 up until 2010, over 176,000 unique businesses qualified for the new business exemption.
How many?
Sorry?
How many businesses?
176,000.
176,000, okay.
Qualified for the new business exemption, and the credits associated with that is around $46.5 million. Now, what we've noticed from that is that the majority of the businesses are small businesses. And when the small business exemption went into effect, where we raised the cap to $100,000 with gross receipts, that you are exempt from paying the tax, many of them now qualify for that. So, there was a huge drop in new businesses that came into the city, and most of those are still between the 100,000 to 500,000 band.
Okay. But on the current rules, is that for new businesses entering the city? So, do we do assume that 176,000 new businesses came in?
Since 2001, yes.
Since this $500,000 cap came in?
That's correct.
And these businesses have never done business in the city before?
There are new businesses that came into the city. That's based on the stats that we have gathered in our L.A. tax system.
Okay. And so, the issue is, when you mentioned that the businesses that were currently here that we changed the cap to 100,000, now, they wouldn't, they wouldn't benefit by the current $500,000 issue with it?
Well, what I'm saying, Councilmember Parks, is that what we're finding is that many of the businesses that otherwise would have qualified for the $500,000 new business exemption, because we raised the cap on the small business exemption, which there is no sunset, they actually qualify for that. So, in the system, we're capturing them as small businesses. And what that basically tells, at least in our mind, is that many of the businesses are small that have taken advantage of a new business exemption. So, I think it would be very important to, you know, raise the cap or eliminate the threshold at least for a period of three years so that we can attract and retain medium-to-large businesses in L.A.
Okay. Let me ask you, how many people take advantage of the $100,000 cap?
The $100,000 cap, the small business exemption, is about 109,000 businesses.
Okay. Colleagues, one of the things, we've looked at this over time, and I think what the concern I have is that we shouldn't look at this as we're losing money. It's money we've never gotten. And I think the issue, if we get 176,000 new businesses that came in the city since 2002, 2001, we would have lost, if we viewed it, $46 million viewed by that cap.
$46.6 million is the credit, the total credit.
The credit that they would have received. The issue is, what we have to take into account is they also given us parking tax, they've given us sales tax, they may have bought a home or two in the city and give us real estate property. The property that they have their businesses in gives us real estate tax, transfer tax because they have to maybe buy a building. Their kids might even go to a school or two and pay tuition. All of those dollars that we get from bringing businesses in force surpasses what we believe we're losing in this issue. If we can replicate another 176,000 businesses over the next three years, it will be money well spent. All we have to do is look at L.A. Live, turn a parking lot into a multi-billion dollar operation of sales tax. What we used to get is property tax and parking tax. Now, we get sales tax, more property tax, more parking tax, more employee tax. All of that comes about because we get people out between operating in the city. If we were losing money and said, "Let's take it out of the 440 and give it back to them," totally different scenario, and I wouldn't be standing up to support that. But if we're talking about money that we have never received and you will only get it if they show up in the city, rent a building or buy a building and create a business, then that's money that you would have never gotten anyway. But all the other things that they populate into our system of taxation, you will benefit greatly. And so, I would think, and also, when we have people say that, "Are we concerned about pitting one business against another?" Well, we pit it, a lot of times, we pit it businesses. We say, "If you make less than $100,000, you don't pay anything, just register." So, we pit it $100,000 and above for $100,000 and below. We pit it people in the movie industry. We've done a tremendous amount of changes to keep movie businesses in the city. We've also recently made changes on internet businesses. So, all these things, we pit all the time and give people some preferences in order to keep them in the city. Here's a preference of creating businesses, and if you come anywhere close to 176,000 businesses in the next three years, this is money well spent.
Councilmembers, first of all, since we have 11 members present, this on the first reading requires 12 votes. I'd like to move, we withhold unanimous consent. For those who may not know what that means, that means it doesn't require a vote. Any member can ask for it, and there is no second necessary. I'll move us to second reading next week, which requires only eight votes. But I do want to address a couple of points. Did I state that correctly, Mr. City Attorney? Thank you. I would like to state a couple of things. First of all, Mr. Parks is absolutely right. We're not talking about tax loss. We're talking about new businesses moving in that probably would not have. We've seen a dramatic reduction in new business investment into the city from 25,000 down to about 5,000 this year. We need to go in the other direction, and we believe this incentive can cause that. With regard to the study, we in fact have a study. The study was conducted by the good professor out of USC, Charles Svensson. He's in the back of the room. Since we're not going to pass this today, I would encourage those members who haven't consulted with Dr. Svensson that they do so. But the significant statistic that jumps out at me is, he is projecting that the business tax holiday will create 55,000 jobs and that each new company will result in a net revenue increase to the city of Los Angeles of $8,000. So, there is a formal academic study that was conducted by an economist, and if I told you the formulas that he presented to committee, you know, you wouldn't understand them. In fact, I couldn't even tell you what the formulas are. They're so complicated. But the theory is consistent with the actions the council took several years ago when it created the exemption for two years for businesses up to 500,000, which means if it works for that, then you got to believe it'll work for this. And so, this is merely an expansion of that. I believe that the Business Tax Advisory Committee is working on a plethora of ideas. One of the things that we did when we established the Business Tax Advisory Committee is that the first time we established the B-TAC, we said, "Come back in 18 months with your recommendations." But this time, because of the economic condition we're in, we specifically said, "Don't wait. If you have an idea that you think is worthy now, present it to us and we'll move it forward." This is not a be-all and end-all proposal here. It is one idea that B-TAC worked with the mayor on and the mayor is presenting to us as an idea for this business tax holiday. But I can guarantee you that B-TAC is going to be coming back with probably dozens and dozens of ideas, and we don't want them to wait. We want them to get us those ideas, and we will move forward with a very aggressive business incentive program as a result of B-TAC's work. Mr. Cardenas, you're absolutely right. We cannot just give incentives to those businesses who come to Los Angeles. Of course, we have to address the issue of competition with other communities that don't have a grocery receipts tax, and I believe this helps us compete. But in addition, we have businesses that are struggling, and we are. B-TAC is considering several proposals right now that would have the impact of reducing the grocery receipts tax on current business that operate in Los Angeles. So, I would just ask that you look at this not as a singular action to save the city of Los Angeles, but as part of an agenda to save Los Angeles, part of a message to the business community that we mean business, we want them to invest in Los Angeles, and this action, we believe, will go a long way. And at a minimum, it will not negatively impact our budget because the businesses that would have invested in L.A. would come in and create jobs anyway, and we believe that more businesses will come. So, with that, my motion to withdraw unanimous consent actually puts this on second reading for the next agenda. And for those that want more information, we're happy to work with you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon and Mr. City Attorney. Just to confirm with a, Mr. Alarcon making a withhold, there is no need for a second, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Coretts.
Yeah, a couple more comments. Based on what you said, I think there's not great likelihood that we would lose much by increasing the cap because we're not attracting that many large businesses. The question I still have some concerns about are adding the third year of exemption because during the period where we offered these tax breaks, we actually got a pretty significant number of new businesses coming in. significant number of new businesses coming in with the two years. So, how do we know that with the third year, we're not winding up with a net loss? Because we may be attracting a few more businesses, but a lot of them were coming with the two years anyway.
Well, relative to the third year, I think what is very critical is that the fact that we're not bringing in a lot of businesses over 500,000 grocery receipts. And if you look at it on a two-year versus a three-year, I think the fact that these businesses would likely enter into long-term leases, that it would give businesses over $500,000 an opportunity to come forward and set footing here. In terms of the businesses that currently qualify for the first and second-year exemption, in our report, we did indicate what the tax credit is, and it's around $2 million, of which about a million is associated with the second year. And we believe that, you know, based on just that limited information, it's around a million dollars. But I think what's important is that we need to provide a mechanism for large businesses to come into the City of Los Angeles, not just in one council district, but throughout the city, because of the dismal results that we have seen over the past three years. And so, I think, you know, this presents an opportunity for the city, particularly given, you know, the small impact overall.
What's the chance that if we broke it up and actually gave the larger businesses the third year at 500,000 and above, but kept the smaller businesses at the same number?
I would have to address, have the City Attorney speak to that. I don't know if we can do that.
And colleagues, just as a point of information, Mr. Kretz, I'm sorry, we hadn't started your time, I think we're probably about two minutes in, and we just have Mr. Krikorian. We are going to lose a quorum in about two minutes. There's been a fire in one of our members' district. She has to leave to take care of that fire, and we have one other item. So, it's clear this is not going to go today, and Mr. Alarcon said he's going to withhold, which means that we'll go to a second reading anyway, so we'll get a chance to further ask questions, work on stuff, or even privately do this. But I'm going to ask folks to wrap up their conversations in the next minute or so.
Yeah. I'm okay to hold it till the rest. I'd ask that we ask the professor that wrote the USC study to also come back when we have that discussion.
We'll make that instruction. Mr. Krikorian?
In light of the circumstances, you can take me off the queue. We'll continue the conversation next week.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Alarcon, you've indicated you withhold?
Yes.
Okay. With that... So, with that withholding, we'll go automatically to a second reading, just for folks who are uninitiated. A withholding of a vote on an ordinance which requires unanimous 12-person or higher vote means that it goes automatically to a second reading. We will go to a simple majority, as ordinances do when they don't get a unanimous vote of 12 members or more. And we call it pulling a nate, for those of you who've been around these chambers for a while. Anyhow, next item, please. Councilmember, that brings us to item number 14, called Special for Cards. Okay? We resolved, okay? And that was called Special for Cards in the public, too? That has not had a public hearing? Mr. City... Okay. Arnold Sacks, if you'd like to come forward on 14? Okay. And Wayne Spindler in Van Nuys, if you'd like to speak. Mr. Sacks passed.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Spindler passes as well?
Nope, nope.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Spindler.
Oh, thank you.
You have one minute, sir.
Yes, yeah. Hamburger Perry told me that. On this matter, it says there's two homes. There's one on South Manhattan, and another one on Blakely Avenue. However, the motion that I have only talks about the house on South Manhattan, and is silent as to the disposition of the Blakely property. And if this is a lien with Bank of America, then why is the city going to pay almost $50,000 to satisfy a lien on a foreclosed property? If it's a city-owned property already, that would be one thing, but this appears to be some private residence. It's not clear what it is. But in any event, if it is foreclosed, it could be a lot more than $49,000, because once you pay the lien and take title, there could be thousands of other dollars of additional expense in repairs, maintenance, and upkeep. So, they should be clear on those two issues. Thank you very much.
Due to the fire, we won't be able to vote on this, or to reconsider that item, Mr. Reyes, but we can reconsider next meeting. We lost the quorum when Ms. Perry left.
So, we can reconsider, though?
We don't have 10 members anymore. So, we will...
We'd rather do a full...
All right. We will... And the City Clerk, we can reconsider at the next meeting? So, we will reconsider that item for Ms. Perry at the next meeting? And we will have to carry this one over for the foreclosed properties as well till our next meeting. We cannot do any adjourning motions today either, so this meeting is now finished. We will be next in session on Tuesday, August 3, 2010. But any announcements before... Hold on, Channel 35, just before you zoom out?
Announcement?
Mr. Cardenas, announcement?
Thank you very much. Colleagues, it gives me great pleasure to announce that one of our honorees at last year's Deaf Festival, Ashley Foley, won the gold medal again at the 16th Annual X Games here in the Los Angeles Coliseum last night. And I'd like to congratulate Ashley and her parents, and her parents as well. She's only 17. She was 16 last year when we honored her. And her parents, Ronnie and Jim, as she closes out the motocross season with back-to-back gold medals. Last year, she closed out the season as being the women's champion for the year. Ashley will compete against Los Angeles Police Department Charlie Beck. He is brave, as he loves to ride motocross. And him and other members of the LAPD will assemble their motocross team at the upcoming Deaf Festival this September, here in the San Fernando Valley, which I host. The Deaf Festival Committee, along with Honda Racing and Red Bull teams, will conduct a miniature demonstration site at Woodley Park in Van Nuys. As part of the commitment to the deaf and hard-of-hearing community, we would like to extend our congratulations to Ashley and her family for winning back-to-back gold medals at the X Games. And we'd also like to thank my council colleagues, once again, for honoring our deaf and hard-of-hearing community and participating in our annual Deaf Festival. And I don't know if it's legal or not, but if I had to put money on that race, I'm going to put my money on Ashley over our fine chief, Beck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Parks?
You know, Tony, at a certain time in life, you know your limitations. Let me ask the public to be aware of some important meetings. We're going to have a South LA Area Planning Commission meeting on August 3, at 4:30, at the Constituent Center at 8475 South Vermont. And it deals with the planning issues, dealing with the Fresh and Easy Store that is tentatively planned for 52nd and Crenshaw. So, it's a very important planning meeting. Also, we would announce that our Empowerment Congress West Neighborhood Council is meeting on August 2, 6:30 a.m., at the LADWP office on Crenshaw. And the final issue is that we will be joining Mr. Weston, CD10, for the night out on Marlton Avenue in Bowlin Villa Senior Facility, just north of King Boulevard on Marlton.
Thank you. These were just announcements, not part of a formal meeting, but just for the public's information. Mr. Cardenas?
Her last name is spelt a little differently than it's pronounced, but it's Folek. Ashley Folek is our gold medal champion. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a reminder to our colleagues, we did lose quorum partially because of a member who had a fire, but also, we have members who are leaving, who are not excused. That is not permissible. And we will announce that and let that people know, that we did not have an excuse today from Councilmember Weisar, who left, and we lost quorum as a result of that. Thank you. We will all see you next Tuesday. That'll be at 10 a.m., August 3. Thank you very much.